Thank you very much and for coming and welcome to the memorial session dedicated to the memory of Rolf Niedermeier and Gerhard Wöginger. Rolf and Gerhard were two landmarks of our community. Rolf was not well, he was. We all know him as the person who invited us to the FPT studies and FPT algorithmics. He brought this topic to Comsol, but also to, he was also responsible for popularizing it in general computer science. He was probably the an ideal of a mentor. He had supervised 30 PhD students. He helped a lot of people in their careers. I think a large chunk of my own career is essentially was possible because at some point I met Rolf and we start working together. Gerhard was a landmark as well. He was a landmark of scientific dedication, scientific integrity. He would, he was essentially almost like computer science himself. I remember once attending a talk where what I heard was, what the speaker said was. And then we run into a difficult problem. And what do you do when you run into a difficult problem? Of course, you just look for a paper by Gerhard and probably there's a solution. And indeed, that was often the case. Gerhard and Rolf were born within two years of each other in mid 60s. And they died within two weeks of each other, just over a month ago. And we're still grieving for the loss. That's why today we're meeting for this memorial session. The two talks will be given by his PhD students, both graduated. Matthias Benter will give the first talk and Robert Betterick will give the second one. The schedule is they will, Matthias will start with a very short presentation on a topic he worked on with. With Rolf and then he will move on to the memorial part. And then after the break, Robert will give a talk in a reverse order, starting with the memorial and then moving to the research part. As usual, each of the talk will in together take 20 minutes. And then we'll have 10 minutes questions and between the talks there will be breakout rooms. If someone wants to ask a question, then one way is to write it in the chat. And then during the question session, there will be answers. So now I give floor to Matthias.
Okay, yeah, thanks for the invitation to speak here today. Let me start with sharing the screen. I hope you can see my screens now, but I believe this is the case. So I want to talk about between a centrality, one of the first papers I worked on with Rolf. And between a centrality, you might heard of before, might not have. It's a topic from network analysis and you might wonder, what does this have to do with the Comsol seminar? So let me start by motivating that between the centrality is actually not that far from topics that you usually discuss here. So two topics you should be very familiar with are voting and opinion diffusion. And network analysis in some sense is very close. So let's look at some questions you might ask in each of these topics and see where the similarities lie. So in voting, you might ask, what is a good rule to select the winner once you know the preferences of all the voters? Or more in the bribery setting, you might ask, which agents do I need to influence? And so in order for a certain candidate to win. For opinion diffusion, you might wonder, are there stable states? And how long does it take for a system of changing opinions to reach such a stable state? Or more in the direction of target set selection, you might ask, what what agents do I need to give free copies or advertisements to? So that they adopt my opinion and share this with their friends, such that in the end, a large majority of the network. Yeah, buys my product or have has my opinion or whatever. And a network analysis, usual questions are like, how modular is a given graph? Or which nodes are very central? And now, if you look at the second question each time, you somehow always want to find the most important agents. Whether these are the agents you want to bribe, or you want to give free copies of your product to. Or a network analysis that are important in some sense, yeah, in some centrality measure. And one of these centrality measures I want to speak about today, that is between the centrality. Let me first give you a quick example of how the between a centrality is defined. And then we will talk about how we can compute it fast, which will be the main part of the talk. Okay, so input very simple and undirected graph. And now the task is to compute the between a centrality. It looks kind of scary, but it actually is not that scary. I will give an example in a moment. So what we want to compute for each triple of pairs SVT, which should all be different. The number of shortest path from S to T that passed through V divided by the number of shortest ST pass. So maybe let's look at an example here, this blue vertex. I claim that this has a between a centrality of 13. Yeah, and let me demonstrate how this is computed. So you can see this is a tree. So this lower part here is always one, there's always exactly one shortest path between each pair of vertices. That's one of the most basic structures of a tree. So we really only need to count how many pairs of vertices are there that pass, whose shortest path passed through this vertex? And there's of course, this one path here between these two vertices. And then there are paths from each of these two vertices to each of these six on the left hand side. So one plus plus two times six, this is 13. And if we do this for all the vertices, we get all of the centrality measures. So I hope the problem is somewhat clear. If not, you may ask any questions at any time. Otherwise, I would continue with some related work. So maybe the most notable work in the direction of between a centrality is an algorithm by Brandes that computes the between a centrality in M times N time. And this paper here was actually cited more than 5,000 times at this point. So it really is a fundamental topic in computer science. And yeah, whenever some algorithm is that important, usually people come and show lower bounds. And indeed, under the old pair shortest pass conjecture, kind of famous conjecture in computer science, you cannot really improve this running time to something subcubic in the number of vertices. Yeah, also approximation was done for this problem. Parallelization was done and pre-processing was done. So cut vertices and bridges, these are just vertices or edges that you can remove from the graph. And then the resulting graph will be disconnected. So somehow you can split it into multiple components and any shortest path from one component to the other has to pass through these vertices or edges. And another one is you can remove degree one vertices. Somehow they are very simple, no shortest path will ever pass through them. So they only end there. And this was done before. You can somewhat handle them. And actually achieve quite significant speed ups in practice using these two data reduction roots. But they come at a slight cost and that is they introduce some vertex weights. I will just call them pen for pending. Somehow, if you remove a degree one vertex, you need to remember that there was actually a vertex where shortest path can start. But these then have to go through the name to the neighbor. And thus, you have that the neighbor should have somehow a more, more influence. And this is done by these weight functions. And now we want to compute this weighted between a centrality, which is just the between a centrality. We already know multiplied by the two weights of the two endpoints. Okay, as said, these two data reduction rules yielded some significant speed up at practice. And we want to work further in this direction. And our main goal is will be to handle degree two vertices. And yeah, you might know that social networks in practice often follow a power law degree distribution. That is, there are very many vertices of low degrees. So if you can handle them somewhat fast, then you can really speed up your algorithm. And this was partially observed also by these two data reduction. Okay, so our high level algorithm looks as follows. First, we do the two data reduction rules. We have already seen that yielded significantly speed up. They will introduce some weights, that's fine with us. Then we will perform Brand's algorithm, which is just a modified breadth first search from each of the high degree vertices. And high degree here just means degree three or more. And then we are left with the degree two vertices and we want to handle them separately. And they can be in different configurations. So one configuration is if you start at some degree two vertex, look at their neighbors. At some point, the chain connects and you get this kind of cycle structure. Another possibility is, well, the chain also ends, but not at a degree two vertex, but some high degree vertex. So you have a cycle that is somehow attached to the rest of the ring. But actually, I light a little bit, this cannot happen. Because this vertex here in the middle would be a cut vertex. Recall a cut vertex, if I remove this, I disconnect the graph. There is some rest here and there's a cycle and they are only connected through this one vertex. So this case cannot occur. And the last cases, we just have path. So they end in high degree vertices that are distinct at both endpoints. And the main bulk of the paper, actually these deals with the last case. But I think most of the structure we use there, we cannot already show with the cycles. And the formulas just look a lot cleaner. You need a lot less case distinctions. That's why I want to focus on the cycles today. Note, we can also handle path. It just involves a lot more case distinctions. Okay, so let's deal with cycles. So what we want to have is a linear time algorithm, linear in the number of vertices in a cycle to compute the between a centrality of all vertices in a cycle. Okay, so let's do that. And what we will do is we have a two stage process. First, we just compute the between a centrality of one vertex V zero. And then, once we have one between a centrality value, we would see that actually the between a centrality of two neighbors are very similar. And so we can then compute the between a centrality of V one using the between a centrality of V zero. And then continue through the cycle to get all of the between a centrality values. So we can spend linear time on the first between a centrality value. We cannot spend linear time on each of them because then we would have credit time, of course. But for the first one, as I said, we are allowed to use linear time. So how can we do this? Well, the first construct we do is we define some function, which we just call W, which just is the sum of all these weights, these pen values we have from a start vertex to an end vertex in clockwise fashion. So might look like this. If I add up all the pen values of all the vertices in blue, then this will correspond to VI being V 12 and VJ being V3. So how can we, we want to compute these in linear time and we will use a similar approach as before. We will compute the between us. So we first fix VI to be V zero. Then we can compute all entries for VJ in constant time each, well, V zero to V zero is just a pen value of V zero. Then when we have all of these pen values already added up, if we want to add one vertex, we just need to add one pen value. And then if we, for example, want to have the entry I've shown here from V 12 to V3. And we only have them for V zero. We can do it in constant time. So basically, the blue area here is everything but the green area. And what is the green area? The green area is this pink area here minus this, this orange value. And now the orange and the pink value I have already computed. So I can compute the green one and thus I can compute the blue one. Okay, so once I have these values, I just need two more definitions, which is just something like the opposite point on the circle. For this demonstration, I will always assume that I have an odd number of vertices. That's just mean makes the computations a little bit cleaner, but we can also handle even number of vertices. So we have this lower opposite and the upper opposite. Let's maybe fix V3 as the vertex. So the lower opposite is, so the opposite would be between the 10 and 11. Lower is just, yeah, rounded down. And analogously, the upper opposite is V11. Okay, so now how can I compute the between a centrality of V zero? Because this was my goal after all. Well, we can observe that all these path, shortest path that pass through V zero have some structure. That is, one endpoint needs to be on the left side and one on the right side. If both of them are, let's say here in this violet region, then there is no way that they will ever leave the violet region. Because the other way around is just way too long. But we can say even more. So the opposite point needs to be on the left side in this picture. But we can even say a little more if we fix one vertex S. Then shortest path to any vertex that passed through V zero well, can end at the last vertex of the cycle, but where can they start? Well, this is just the upper opposite. Note, we defined the opposite as this kind of line dividing the circle. Any shortest path on this upper half will go through V2, V1, V0. And any shortest path to anything on the low, lower end will go through V4, V5, V6 and not through V0. And once we have this, the computation for the between a centrality of V zero is kind of simple. It's just we iterate over all the possible values of S in this violet region here. We have their pen value multiplied by the sum of all pen values from the upper opposite to the last vertex here. And it's just the number of, or, and it's just the index of the last vertex in the cycle. Okay, so this is the between a centrality of V zero. And now, as said, we want to compute the between a centrality of V I plus one, given that we already know the between a centrality of V one. So how do these two values differ? Well, any shortest path that passes through V zero also has to pass through V one. So there between centrality should essentially be the same. This was just one catch, there might be shortest path that at an end in V zero and go through V one. They will be counted for V one, but not for V zero. And there might be shortest path that end in V one, passing through V zero, but not passing through V one. So essentially what we do is if we have the between a centrality of V zero, we need to subtract any shortest path starting in V one. And this will just be any shortest path starting in V one. Going to the left side and here we again have these upper opposite. And we need to add something, well, we need to add all the shortest paths, starting in V zero, passing through V one. This goes to V two up to the lower opposite of. Yeah, in this example, V zero in general VI. And so this essentially gives us the formula, the between a centrality of V I plus one is the between a centrality of V I minus this orange part I have explained, plus this violet part. And that basically concludes what I wanted to talk about between a centrality today. But yeah, this is the memorial session for Rolf. So I have prepared a little speech for Gerhard and Rolf. I will start a little bit with Gerhard, but yeah, I have more to say about Rolf, who was my PHD advisor. So yeah, let me show you a picture of Gerhard and Rolf and talk a little bit about the two. So I only had the opportunity once to work with Gerhard. So I mostly leave it to Robert, the next speaker, to talk about him. I just wanted to share one anecdote about Gerhard. When we were working on some NP hardness proof, we discussed many different variants of satisfiability. And Gerhard knew an astonishing amount about them. At one point, the question arose whether set remains NP hard if each variable appears only three times, say twice positive and once negated. And without even thinking about it, Gerhard immediately knew the answer. Yes, the problem remains NP hard. You can even restrict it to this, to the setting where each clause contains at most three literals. However, if you require that each clause contains exactly three literals and each variable appears exactly three times, then the formula is actually always satisfiable by some matching argument. And in case you were wondering, Gerhard was of course correct. And he was referring to a paper from 1984 in discrete applied mathematics. For Rolf, who was my PhD advisor, said I have naturally more to tell. Let me maybe start with some numbers. Over the years, Rolf supervised 30 PhD students, headed over 15 different DFG project, was local organizer for three conferences and organized at least at least six darksto seminars. But I don't just want to tell you about Rolf's achievement here. I want to tell you a little more about his personality. I think his most characteristic trait was that he was always up for some witty or pointed remark. He sometimes presented presented them in a way making everybody feel slightly embarrassed if they did not know which famous composer's birthday it was that day. Or who coined the saying, please excuse this long letter, I didn't have time to write a short one. He could then blame our uneducatedness on the poor quality of any non Bavarian school education before finally admitting that he himself had only picked up this knowledge in the morning from the newspaper or the radio or whatever. He also used slight variations of these witticisms without the embarrassing others part to bridge any distance between him and the students. Because they always came with an implicit permission or rather accept expectation to be returned with an equally pointed retour. In this and many other ways, Rolf was very approachable. By that, I mean that I, or anyone else for that matter, could always go to his office and ask him about everything. He would probably offer me a cup of tea, or more precisely, just tea, the cup I had to bring myself. And he would definitely give me his full attention, no matter how large the pile of other more urgent or important work on his desk was. This even remained true when he became dean and had to spend half of his day on bureaucracy and Zoom meetings. I think I can say without exaggeration that Rolf lived for academia. He usually was one of the first in the morning in the office and the last one to leave. If one of us was still around when he left the office in the evening, he would say goodbye with one of his signature comments like, are you trying to save on heating or at home or why are you still around? But besides the sheer amount of time he spent with and for academia, he also contributed to academia in many different capacities. Just to name a few, he worked at the computer science review board of the DFG in the review panel for ERC starting grants as member of the steering committee of Stacks and as mentioned, as dean at TU Berlin. Despite that, Rolf always kept an eye for the small, seemingly unimportant things. When university staff failed to fill the soap dispenser in the bathroom, he just brought soap from home. When a small butterfly ended up in the, in his office last December, he took great interest in it. And it was his favorite conversation topic for at least a week. He put a small glass filled with some sugar water on his windowsill and some handwritten note next to it for the cleaning lane, saying, please leave this here for the butterfly. He also personally ensured that there was always food on the table. And I mean that very literally, foods or snacks on the table in our kitchen. In the very last mail he wrote before his unexpected death, when he was still very sick at home, Rolf asked one of our older group members to restock that snack pile using the supplies hidden everywhere in his office. That was just the kind of person he was. We, and by we, I mean his students mourned for an inspiring mentor, a bright scientist, a supportive colleague and a good friend. And with that, I want to conclude my talk. Thank you for your attention and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As for the witty remarks by Rolf, I remember one as well. I was once in some conversation with Rolf, somehow the topic moved to the reading of books. And I proudly announced that at that point, it was probably September or October, I have read maybe 40 or 50 books. Rolf looked at me with this, this very distinct look of us as, well, it's probably not the look that the butterfly got. But others probably occasionally might have. And he said, well, that's a good number of books if you don't have too many of your own original thoughts. And of course, I mean, he phrased it in a, in a very friendly way. And it completely changed the way I looked at, I mean, at books and how people, how certain stereotypes in societies work. But let's move on to the questions for Matthias. I think we have probably about maybe five minutes or so. I don't see questions in the chat. So either turn on your microphone and speak up or, ah, there is a question by Bill. So how robust is this measure of centrality with respect to small changes in the graph? So if you perturb away on each edge from one to something close to one, is, and is robustness considered important?
Let me think about it for it. So unfortunately, it's not very robust. Let me give you, so at least locally where the changes occur. You might have. So what I just trying to build here is this, and these are somehow important or heavy parts that can either pass through here or through here. And this of course could also be longer path. But if this path is only slightly shorter than this path, then the between a centrality of these vertices will be very small. Whereas these vertices will have very high centrality measures. And if I change the distances slightly so that it flips from the shortest path passing through the upper path, then the between a centrality will increase much on the upper part and decrease much on the lower part. So in that sense, I hope I got the question right. The centrality measures are not very robust. But yeah, robustness is something studied in this field, of course.
Yeah, I don't see more questions on the chat, but I have one of my own. So essentially, I understand that this research was motivated by speeding up the algorithm practically. And did you, did you actually check? Did you achieve the speed up?
No, so this thesis started as a bachelor thesis of Alexander Didman, one of the quarters. And in the beginning, we had high hopes for this to be a doable problem. And in the beginning, we had high hopes for this to be a doable problem. Turned out to be much harder because of the case distinction for path, I said. So the student didn't have time to implement it. And also after the thesis was finished, we somehow got stuck with other work. We never came around to implementing it. It was, it was, yeah, motivated and wished for in the beginning, but for time reasons, we never actually implemented. It's also one thing I, yeah, I didn't go too much into it is that this kind of adaptive algorithm, our running time is, this is the feedback edge number. So the number of vertices to remove from the graph such that it becomes a forest. This is smaller than the number of edges, of course, but it's something like m minus n. So if m is considerably larger than n, then our algorithm will not eat a theoretical speed up. So we really need very, very many of these degree two vertices to achieve a speed up.
Okay, thank you. Again, I don't see more questions on the chat. But if you, you can just turn on your microphone and ask a question, you have one. And otherwise, I guess maybe with the implementation, you can wait until you have a student who will cover three degree vertices.
Yeah, but they will probably be much more difficult.
Right. Anyway, let's, let's thank Matthias again. Actually, it's never clear how to do clapping of hands in the seminar, but well, let's at least imagine we're clapping hands for Matthias. And now I think I can ask Dominik to move us to breakout rooms for ten minutes. And then we will restart and Robert will present his talk. Okay, so I think we are, at least, I think we are back to presentations, but my Zoom is at least doing strange things. Okay, now it's doing less strange things. Except, okay, so I give the floor to Robert Blederak, who will talk about his joint work with both Rolf and Gerhard, starting with the memorial part. You are muted, Robert.
Okay, now you can hear me?
Yes, now we can hear.
I hope you can also see this slides. I'm fighting a bit with Zoom. Zoom is doing strange things sometimes. Okay, good. Yeah, so I will talk about this old paper. It's a paper which I wrote together with Gerhard and Rolf. Before I go to this, let me say a few words about Gerhard. So probably I don't have to tell anyone that Gerhard was a brilliant scientist. So the story that Matthias told, this anecdote many of us know. So I think in probably most of the collaborations with Gerhard, there was some point where Gerhard was referring to some old paper. Sometimes he even knew the talk where the talk was and where he heard about the person explaining the problem. So he was, yeah, he was a living lexicon and it's really a big loss also in this regard. So the community, the whole computer science community has really lost the superstar. But I think I can tell maybe more new things if I at least to, to so said have not worked with him to tell something about his personality. He was a very modest person, I would say. Very nice. And he had also a great sense of a bit special humor. It was sometimes a bit challenging, but always not, so not really evil, I would say. So Gerhard is from Austria. So he received all the degrees from Graz. He worked at different places, FU Berlin, Graz, Twente, Edofen, where he was pretty long. Then he was for his Humboldt, Worte, TU Berlin, and then lastly he was in Aachen. So on an older version of his website, he had a special information that Austria, that is for some people, the place where the kangaroos come from. Maybe also showing some of, some of his special humor. Actually, a bit unfortunate that this old website is now still available, but it wasn't updated anymore in the recent years. But it's still very valuable. What you also find there is his P versus NP page. So if you just Google for Gerhard's name, then you can find his webpage on Edofen. And there he collected a lot of proofs proving P equals NP, P an equals NP. And so on, with few or even no real comments on that, so just collecting them. I think this is also maybe something that characterizes him. One other thing you can also find on his website, also on the recent version, is that he was somewhere referring about his Erdisch number. Actually, he is referring there to his Erdisch Bacon number, which is finite. So probably you all know Erdisch numbers. So this is like the path in the research co-author graph to Polish. There's a similar thing with Kevin Bacon is an actor. And yeah, so Espino now Gerhard was also an actor. He was an extra in the Pope John Paul II, which was back then partially created in Graz. So he probably, I don't know, as a student, also used the opportunity to play there. Don't know whether this was already to optimize this number, but he was very proud of it, I think. He was really working in many communities. I think the proper integration into Comsec came in in our community, came in the seminar in two thousand twelve. So I remember that because I also attended there and he was very fascinated by the community, lot of new problems for him. It was like, I know so many nice things in scheduling and graphs and now has even a new world with preferences and one can do all these fun things. We are really having fun playing with these mathematical objects. Yeah, DAX to seminars, he was probably not, not just a recent visitor. He was maybe DAX to inventory rather than a guest. So probably this is also something that characterizes him because he was invited to many seminars in different areas. Yeah. So we are, most of us are rather working in some specializations and may attend seminars there, but Gerhard was like a guest in so many research areas that he could attend so many seminars. Yeah, so I think some further anecdotes will be slightly integrated into the talk where I can yeah, I can explain some of Gerhard's personalities when developing this results here. Okay, so I'm talking about how to pursue your agenda in collective binary decisions. This is topic actually came from reasoning together with Rolf about what could be in analog of Kondossey property, like in higher dimension. You will later probably see how we then developed and Gerhard's was one of his one of his special powers, I would say, to extract from some reasoning a very clean combinatorial model. That made sense that you will see it's very simple to illustrate as well. And but here, let me give some motivation, which is kind of a starting point. So what could be an application of the model, so assume the European Commission is, yes, is requested by the European Parliament to propose some antispy law. Yeah. So now the task is to to create a law and the law has some, yeah, some components. And the commission has to find these components. Yeah. So that's why from the large of, large set of possible proposals, yeah, so they are known from public discussions, the commission has to select the elements of the law. Okay. And at the end, of course, the commission wants this law to be passed. And it has some data about each parliament member's favorite elements. And now the assumption of this model that is that parliament member will be happy with the law. If the majority of the elements of the law is liked, yeah, so this is in this favorite set. And then the law gets accepted at the end of the majority of the parliament members is happy. Yes, we have two times majority. I will show you an example in a second. Such kind of things arise in different areas. So for example, the design of party platforms, yes, very similar situation. Also when forming coalitions, change status of some association or generally finding some agreement. And we have considered some variations, for example, when all voters, instead of just the majority of voters have to agree. Yes. So for example, when you have some agreements, some contracts between, between states, then often we have the situation that really all states have to agree. Now that as you will see from the mathematical point of view, it's not much different of the majority is heading, but from the applications perspective, it's very different. And many important problems, they really, you have to satisfy really every single member of the community. And this is where the title comes from. There might be some agenda. And that is a subset of proposals that should definitely be in the ballot. And here maybe is an anecdote again to Gerhard. So I was considering to give the motivation he wants wrote because you can also see this as an evil action. Yeah. So there is, I think there was some there was some governor of some fake state in the US with some fake Austrian background or so. That wanted to put through some, some evil components in the, in the law. So that's also one way of how you can see this. Okay. So now let's see some math. So what is this problem about? So we have here the unanimously accepted ballot versions where we have, this is all the same. We have a set of proposals. Now this are possible elements of the law, for example. We have the voters, voters have their favorite elements, their favorite proposals. And we have some agenda, agenda means it's also a subset of the proposals. And this is a threshold that we want to put, put through. And the question is very simple. So is there a subset of these proposals? Yeah. So that enough of the agenda is satisfied, but the problem is also interesting if agenda is empty. Yeah, this is one condition. And the other is that every single voter accepts the ballot and accepting this is maybe important now means that the intersection of what the voter likes and what is proposed is at least so strictly larger than half of the size of what is proposed. Yeah. So the strict majority of the elements of the law must be must be wished by the voter, then the voter is happy. Yeah, this other version is very similar here, just to replace that every single voter shall accept, be requested, is strict majority of the voters accept. Okay, I promised an example. This is now the running example with I have proposals and for voters. So what are the proposals? It's antispy law. So proposal one could be no audio monitoring, no collection of metadata in communication would be the second one, no transfer of bank transaction data. And then some maybe sneaky proposals in income sources of the parliament members are kept. Yeah, that's also very important. For antispy reasons, of course, and then there is maybe the most questionable one, number five, no effect on intelligence agencies of EU and the Alis. Yeah, and this could be some example. Ballots and preferences. We have now this representation of the input. This is just one, we have just one row for each voter. Yeah. And we have zeros and ones. So for example, this is represented by the first row with one at column two, three and four. And now we can look at this matrix, this small example. So you can find a solution, for example, if you take these three proposals over here, this would be accepted by all the voters. However, also less than half of the vote, that's like this last proposal, yes, is questionable one. The commission could put it through, yeah, by proposing simply not the three, it's like all voters, but it could propose or proposes at once. Yeah, so law contains all these elements and now still a majority likes it, yeah. Okay. There's one interesting property that makes this problem a bit weird when handling with it. Namely, there is no more initiative with respect to solutions sizes. Yeah. So for example, if we have here this model's solution was three. Yeah, there is a solution of size five. There is a solution, another solution of size three. But there is no solution of size four. We can have similar effects like when we exchange these two values. Then here we have certainly, we have then a solution of size one, so just this proposal, this is the majority setting, this is like by the majority of the voters. However, there is no of size two. And then there's again something of larger size, like size three. Yeah. So this makes the problem a bit a bit challenging to handle with because we can't rely that larger or smaller solutions, which is usually the case exists. Okay, this is also kind of some memorial slides and fixed parameter tractability. So the concept probably the community is now pretty aware of is to find algorithms where the combinatorial explosion is confined to some parameters, so meaning that we can reach some running time of this kind here. Super polynomial is restricted to some parameter. Yeah. And we have these classes W of W T hard problems which tell us that the problem is presumably not fixed parameter tractability. Then there is another concept with slightly plays a role. We don't need the details. You can, the session is one technique to achieve FPT results. And this is done by shrinking the instance into some purely small equivalent instance. That's basically everything you need to know. Now I would like to give you some insights into the problem. First of all, some observation for small intersections. Yeah. So if you have two voters and they are both happy with some, with some ballot, yeah, then it can't be that they have no intersection. Yes, they would have no intersection, then not both of them good. Good. I mean, both would need to like the strict majority, yeah, wherever we put one, you would have to overcompensate. Yeah. So this game is not possible. However, if there is at least some small intersection like this, from proposal, then it is possible. Yeah, but we have some interesting property about about the number of proposals that intersect, namely for every proposal we have here in this part of the first voter, of voter I. We need another one here. So we get kind of equal number of elements from both favorite ballots. And this is something very useful in the proofs and later on. Okay, and then here is some general result, basically saying that the unanimous version of the problem and the majority wise version of the problem are not too much different, so we can reduce the unanimous version with the majority version with only small overhead and the proof I can even present with a small picture. If you have any instance over here, you can pretty easily pad it just with voters that don't like anything. And then to get the majority of voters satisfied, you have to satisfy all the original orders, so nothing complicated. Okay, instead I would like to present here some overview of results. And I will go to some details here, but not too much. So what are the main messages? The first of course, the problems NP complete. That's what you probably expected because yeah, I've introduced FPT and this mostly makes sense if we have hard problems. So we have tractability for the number of proposals. That's not very surprising. Also for the number of voters we have tractability. Also for the number of voters, we have tractability for solution size, we have hardness and the two further parameters, B max and B gap. V P max, which is the maximum size of the favorite ballots, ja, so if every voter doesn't like too many elements should be intuitively easier and indeed at least here unanimous version becomes easier. However, the majority wise version does not become easy. And there was another parameter we were interested, unfortunately, it doesn't give tractability, which is the difference between the minimum size of favorite ballots. Ja, and this guarantees threshold here, but this doesn't give tractability. Okay, so in our example, running example instance, number of proposals, M S five, number of voters is for B max is three, so we have at most three ones per. And the solution size is three, ja, because this was the smallest solution. Okay, so I will very brief sketch about this hardness construction behind this N P hard because this can be used for different results as well. Here's the reductions from hitting set. Relatively simple, we just need our insights from the observation I've just shown. So hitting set is a problem where we have some universe and we have some family offsets over the universe and some integer K. And we ask whether some size K hitting set, so that means size K subset of the universe, so that all these elements hit, ja, and in this example, we search for hitting set of size two. So basically, we we take the incidence matrix of hitting set. Ja, where we have the sets as columns and the rows as elements, so right naturally what you expect and then we need to do some padding. We have two extra voters and K dummies. Ja, and then we introduce one special proposal. And what is done here is pretty much using this observations I've just shown you. So you see the voters here, they only agree on this special issue. So this is proposal alpha and this ensures that the number of red proposals and the number of blue proposals is the same. So set ensuring as that we take a set of size K. Ja, and then the design here is pretty easy to see. Then ensure that voter is satisfied exactly if at least one one is selected. Ja, so and this corresponds to selecting the hitting set in the original. So just instance, okay. And this result also gives us that this civilization results do not exist. Now, what you might have realized here is in this table, we don't und die have the hardness result, we also have completeness. And this is something which Gerhard was always pretty eager to. So he was not only interested in finding out whether a problem is, ah, W two hard, just he also wanted to know whether it's complete. And here is one issue. We only have darkness here, but this was of course, he had, he had was not satisfied, what we also have. This is not in the paper because it's really special. We have here membership of some class, which is called W two majority. So when I met once Gerhard in the train, so after we worked pretty much together, he was referring to some newer papers he read from me and was complaining that I publish incomplete papers. In my in my papers, there only the hardness results, I never have the upper bounds, so nobody would know whether the problem is really in W one or W two. And I was complaining or explaining, well, that might be technically interesting, but the concept community would not be interested in really knowing this upper bounds. So for you now, you have the opportunity to prove me wrong and Gerhard right. If you request some explanation of what is upper bound here actually is, I have later prepared some slides and can maybe if you always wanted to know what is W classes are, I can give a very brief introduction to them as well, actually I have to to explain this strange class over here. From the practical point of view, all these W one, W two, W forty two, or this means it's not fixed by the trackable. Ja, but they are actually consequences that one can formulate at least. Ja, so the other results, I will probably mostly skip over. We have some FPT here for this B max parameter. This is for the unanimous version, it's basically a search tree. Ja, so here the idea is that we want, we have to satisfy all the voters and for this, we basically need for each voter, we need some of them, so we can first guess the solution size and then we can add some proposal in a branching way. Ja, so also standard algorithm, this result here for number four, that is this reach by LP technik. This is also pretty maybe well fitting to this setting of the talk because Gerhard was actually one of those that rediscovered abroad. Es ist I P approach, the algorithm of Lenzstra into the FPT community. So I was one of the first that realized that with this old result from the eighties, so again, Gerhard's lexicon like knowledge, you can actually get fixed by the productivity, namely if you design in I L P. Where the number of variables is bounded in your parameter. Ja, and this is also done here, I won't go into details here. But ja, in a sense, this is again, this technique is so famous, something we probably have to think, Gerhard, for. And then there is one special result as well, which is more of combinatorial nature. Namely, together with, we worked here together with Noga alone. And here we were interested in the size of a minimum, minimal unanimously accepted ballot. So basically, this question is how large can solutions be? Ja, how large can minimal solutions be? As we have seen, it can be that the essence of solution that takes the whole proposal set. Ja, but one would expect that if there are only few voters, ja, or the few rules here, then there cannot be infinitely many columns to satisfy all of them. Ja, and indeed it's not infinite, but the surprising part which Noga proved was that actually it can be exponentially large, ja, and this bound is pretty tight. So also this means from a practical point of view, we can't really do much of pre-processing and take many columns away with if we have only few voters. Ja, because what we have to keep from the columns is exponential. Ja, we have similar bounds also for the majority case. Okay, I think that's basically what I wanted to present. Open questions again advertising, ja, so majority accept ballot is it in W two? Ja, we just know it's in W two majority, whatever it is. Or is it maybe even W two majority complete? We don't know. Of course, there's also some other adjustments for future work. Some most natural one is probably that proposals are not equally important. So one would naturally add weights there, ja, this makes a problem, of course, harder. Voters may have different power influence and the threshold to convince voters with majority. So of course a bit random and could have other specials. Thanks.
And thank you, Robert. We will soon move into questions. There are not yet questions in the chat, so I can already make a threat that if there are no questions, I will actually ask about W two majority. So that's probably a good idea to come up with something. But before we move there, we will let. So Robert mentioned his interaction with Gerhard on the train and incomplete papers, but probably many of us had some sort of interaction like that with Gerhard. I remember so Gerhard was really hardcore theoretician. And I guess this AI world and console world was indeed new to him and occasionally surprising. And I remember once arguing, I mean, I would argue with him, for example, about double blind reviewing and that how good it is and he maybe wouldn't necessarily support my view. But I remember once arguing with him something about theoretical conferences and that I would say that, you know, maybe with this appropriate blind reviewing and more welcome to the new problems from console grid and just some of the old ones. Maybe so if these are not done, I will not come to these conferences. And Gerhard only looked at me and said, well, that's an equilibrium. So and that that's part of his and I now really think of this with a lot of fondness. So I'm glad I could have these conversations with him. And now I believe that is asking a question, has a question, so voice to you.
Can I? Can we ask a question?
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
Okay, if you look at this application, plausible extension is that voters also can have issues on the ballots, they are absolutely against. So you could look at extensions of the problem where each voter can at least exclude one topic, one issue on the ballot. If that is only, you won't accept it, has that been considered?
No, not yet, but I actually like the idea pretty much because, I mean, adding general weights would probably more or less make the problem just harder in like standard ways. But giving the opportunity to voters to like V two against the specific proposals is not as powerful as general weights. And I agree, it's pretty, it's pretty useful. We haven't thought about it and I'm also not aware about any any related work doing that.
Okay, thanks. We we also have questions from Arrow. And the question is, what other models of approval did you check besides approving the majority of issues?
Yes, what I mean is that the model you presented is somewhat weird because of the monotonicity. So maybe a different model that is monotonic, maybe will will also be easier.
Okay, so I'm not sure how we can easily get rid of non-monotonicity here. If we replace majority by something different.
What about I support a proposal if it contains a majority of my approved? Of my approved.
Okay.
Even if it's a port, it contains also many topics I don't approve, but I don't care, I don't care about my own. My own approval set.
Ja, exactly, exactly, that would be, that would be monotonic. And this this goes much closer into the classical multi winner voting then, ja, but certainly we have to consider that it's just a completely different flavor. Ja, so here having this solution size open was was really a modeling decision for us. Okay. Ja, so basically putting this question, we were interested in just one sentence. Is there anything that voters can agree on? Ja, and now you have to translate what agree on means.
You could, you could, so you could, for example, add a combine this with a previous suggestion to have topics that I reject. And then you have to find a subset that contains a majority from each voter's approval, but but none of the rejections.
Ah, okay, ja.
Interesting. We have two more questions. I think Matthias on the chat was first. And the question is, have you thought about a setting where issues might contradict each other and hence cannot be contained together in a law? So I expect it's probably some judgment aggregation kind of.
Oh, ja, that's that's going into the direction of judgment aggregation. Ja, I would rather than try to to look in judgment aggregation models. Ja, but ja, it's certainly interesting to it would go into judgment aggregation with majority, with kind of some kind of majority rule.
Okay, so I guess the answer is in essence, no.
In essence, no, yes.
Yes, and let me give voice to Edith with the next question.
It's not a question, it's a briefly mark. So there is a paper in AMAS this year, which is called the price of majority support, which does not cite your paper, as I just checked, but seems to be working with a very similar model. So I put, I just messaged, well, eh, so it's by Roger and Buttonhofer and one of his students. I just messaged another student of Roger Waterhofer and working with that they should look at your paper, but I thought kind of in the interest of fairness, I will also tell you. Right, so there seems to be some overlap, you may want to have a look. The price of majority support, Roger Waterhofer and the student.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I don't see more questions on the chat or on Zoom. And I will not fulfill my threat of asking about W two. I think I was clearly proved how it should go. But I will probably use this at every other talk by Robert I will ever be sharing. And I think I, this is it as far as me is as far as I'm concerned. And the memorial session, but let me pass the voice to to Dominique, who I guess have some some issues to announce.
Ja, just some housekeeping. This is the last seminar of this academic year and we're going into a summer break for July and August and then hope to be back in September. Or we send around some votes to see which weekdays are most preferred by the community. Ja, thanks all for coming. The recordings are all always available on YouTube. So you can revisit your favorite episodes. Right, thanks for coming.
I think we have one more announcement from Edith.
Right, so I thought I'll mention that the social choice and welfare conference in Mexico City is coming up. Right, and for those of you who are planning to go anyway, or maybe for those of you who can make the decision to attend on a short notice, there will also be a com sock workshop on the day before the conference. So the attendance is open to everyone who will attend the main conference. So there will be some exciting talk by com sock people who will be attending. Right, and yeah, if you are going anywhere, you're welcome to join. If you're not planning to go, there is still time to reconsider.
Have a great summer, everyone.
Thank you. And good summer. Thank you very much to everyone for attending and thank you speakers.
And thank you to the organizers.
Thanks, Björn.
Thanks to Dominique and Edith.
Thank you very much.
Thanks to Bill, thanks to everyone else.